We will begin, so call the meeting to order at 6:32. Thanks, everybody. We're gonna, I'll make a motion to approve the meetings of the March 4th, special, March 9th, special, March 9th, regular, March 12th, special, and March 31st, special meeting.
I'll second.
I didn't see the 26 minutes on the website yet, so I will hold those off. All those in favor, any questions, sorry? All those in favor? Hi, thank you. Public communication, there was a, an email from Leah. We're in a sort of ongoing conversation, looking at the senior transportation. And she had sent along a forwarded an email with a bus and that somebody has for sale. I had a lengthy conversation with Bob Valentine up in Goshen about the program that they have with Cornwall. So they have sort of a small regional program where they share a bus. It's housed in Goshen. The, it's largely funded through ConDOT slash federal grant. He did say they have about 172 folks who were transported during the, or who use the riders who used the bus in fourth quarter of last year. So even in the midst of a pandemic, they had pretty high usage. It doesn't look like we would be able to sort of loop in on their program. That was sort of my hope, that we would be able to use their existing program and, and pigtail onto it. But I, it, from what Bob was saying, he thought that the, they already have high readership, high ridership. So there's a couple of options to explore. Buying our own bus is one of them. There is this grant out there. The, the grant requires a lot of paperwork. And everybody has very full plates right now, especially Barbara. So I want to talk to Leah more about sort of what her thoughts are. They have, they're putting a new, a new director in place for Northwest Transit, that organization. So I think we should wait and see what, who they get in place. And if we can, see if we can solve it through Northwest Transit. Or are we at the tipping point where we need to partner with Warren and do this? But going through purchasing a bus and getting a grant to support the, the entire, the whole program is, is not a small lift. So just, that's where that email came from. And Leah and I are continuing to have conversations on it. Any questions or anything?
When does the, when does it end?
When does, what end?
Well, right now, the, the, the transportation has been with, through that Northwest Corner Group, right?
Yeah, it was the dialeride.
Dialeride. And so I guess the question is, is there any immediacy to deal with this? When is it, when do we anticipate it becoming a problem?
It's hard, it's hard to say. I, you know, I don't have a, a crystal ball. But I, where I see the Northwest Transit District going is once they get a new director in place, I think we're going to see more from them. And there's going to be more involvement from them. For right now, we, we're gonna, Leah, sorry, Joyce and I are gonna revisit Fish and get in touch with them to see if they're going to be stepping up our operations again. They were suspended during COVID. So we're looking at those two pieces for, you know, the next probably six months to a year. I'm not, I, again, I wish I had a crystal ball. Well, you know, I, I can touch base with Ruth Epstein, who's on the board at the Northwest Transit District to see where they are in that process of hiring a new person. If that's, you know, I'll just, I'll touch base with her and report back on it at the next meeting. Barbara, you're on, Report of Treasurer.
Wow, how does that happen so fast?
Miracles.
No. Right. I'm trying to share my screen. I don't know, can you see it?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, so this is my, my usual report. This top section is different meetings that I've been going to and having to attend. Because the summer storm has now been declared a federal disaster. FEMA is hot on everybody's trail to hurry up and submit expenses so that they can wrap that up. So I believe all my paperwork has to be done by the middle of May. And what they're doing is FEMA's having weekly meetings, which are just basically phone calls to make sure that all the different municipalities are staying on track and getting this, this information to them so that they can reimburse. Again, we only get reimbursed at 75%, but it's still going to be somewhere around $40,000, I think, or more. This middle section here of my report is the same as usual. It's the activity for the different types of transactions that we have, how many, and the dollar value. In May, just because of, or excuse me, in March, because of the timing of the way Thursdays fell, there was actually five payroll runs in March instead of four. So that's why the payroll seems a little bit higher. The KVFD rescue boat has now been purchased and paid in full. And there was a couple salary surveys that came around that I had to complete. This bottom section is the actual versus budget to date. These red figures over here are additional appropriations approved by the taxpayers. This 55,000 is the additional appropriation to cover the EMS or EMR staffing. I forget what the acronym is. To date, through March 31, we've paid out $9,718 of that 55 for that staffing.
And Barbara, just a question, that staffing goes, that staffing expenditure goes till the end of the budget year, correct?
Correct. And there's an appropriation in the current, in the proposed budget.
Right.
For them.
And I'm just looking at. And, okay, thank you.
Yep. And then the bottom section there is just a little bit of information. The revenue is pretty strong. The tax collections are, are strong. There, the interest that was budgeted has not met its target. It's not going to meet its target. As we all know, the interest rates are very favorable now for refinancing homes and buying homes, but not so favorable for investments. However, just to piggyback on the last comment about purchasing homes, the town clerk has collected $83,000 more than was budgeted for her collections through the end of March. And then the litigation line is at $41,000 over budget right now. I just did a double check on the transfer station. And it's very possible that that staffing line will not exceed its budgeted amount. But we'll have to wait and see. I don't know what the plans are for the rest of the staffing over there for the rest of the year.
And Barbara, just a question on the town clerk collection. Is that only filing fees? Is that, is that what that is attributable to, or is it?
Yes, I would say that 98% of it is the conveyance tax fees that we're collecting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
The building inspection is also doing great guns. That's already exceeded its budgeted amount. We still have three months left to, to book. The hope is always that the construction value will translate into an increased grand list, which will help with the mill rate. But we don't really know how that pans out until the end of the year, or actually until revow, but we'll see. And that's all I have for my report for today.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
Next is tax refunds. Seven tax refunds we have from Debbie for a total of $3,352.35. So I will make a motion to approve those tax refunds totaling $3,352.35.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All those in favor? Hi, thank you. New business, I'm gonna go right back to you, Barbara, for adding a signer for one of the accounts, if you want to fill in.
Let's see, there's going to be a more detailed report coming at a later date when I get all the information together. But there's been a little bit of an issue with the Town Clerk's Office and accounting. So one of the, I'm adding additional procedures and additional internal controls to that office. And one of them is that I am going to be a signer, I need to be a signer on that bank account for dual control purposes and monitoring. And up to this point, I have not been a signer on that account.
Has it just been one signatory or two?
Correct.
One.
Yeah.
Are you a signatory on all, all departments that collect funds?
Yes.
Okay.
So Darlene went to the bank and the bank said, Union Savings Bank is requiring approval from the Board of Selectmen to add me as a signer before they'll take action.
So I'll put that in the form of a motion that the treasurer be added as an authorized signer for the Union Savings Account for the Town Clerk's Office.
I'll second.
Correctly worded, Barbara? Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Thanks, Barbara. Train Campaign, I'm gonna turn over to Donna, I just saw her.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are, okay, sorry. My, I had the window open for like 20 minutes today during, while they were mowing the lawn. And my contact lenses are not happy about it.
Um, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the Board of Selectmen the fact that there's a House, proposed House Bill in the state of Massachusetts for the creation of a committee to do an investigation. I can't think of a better word, for the possibility of passenger rail service from Pitts Field down to Danbury. So it would be along the Houstonic Rail Line. If this bill actually does get passed, there's a possibility that you guys will be contacted with them for feedback, conversation. I don't know if they would come to the office and meet with you guys, or if it would just strictly be a phone call or something in writing. But I just want you to know that it's something that's been going on. There's an organization called the Train Campaign that comes out of the Berkshires. The woman that's running this organization, it's a nonprofit, is very passionate about rail service. They've already spent millions of dollars on refurbishing some of the rail lines right over the Connecticut Massachusetts border. And their goal is to go ahead and make rail service, passenger service, something that will be viable in the very near future. And I just found this pretty interesting. It was something that came out of the Train Campaign. And I think it's something that you're going to have to be aware of for the very near future. So I looked it up just now before the meeting started. And as of 3/29, it was referred to the Committee on Transportation. And then April 13th, the Senate, and this is in Massachusetts, not in Connecticut, the Senate concurred. So I don't see where it is at this point in time right now. But just something that I'll be keeping an eye on, and I wanted you guys to be aware of. And that's it.
Thanks, Donna.
I've been, I've been on the mailing list for them forever. I mean, they've been, this is probably two and a half years, maybe three years endeavor.
Yep. Yeah. And there's also, there's also, there was a bill passed two years ago, I think, to do a study down in the New York corridor for the Brewster Line on the New York side. And then there's a bill right now before the legislature to do one from a study similar from the Danbury to the New York border. And I've had lots of conversations with the legislators about passenger rail service. A bunch of years ago, Bruce had, I had reached out to him. He had talked with the COG about it. And the COG was actually not in favor at the time. It's, and it's been one of those subjects that, you know, had we, hadn't been so busy with the current stuff, it would probably be before the COG to talk about this again. One of the first conversations I had when I came into office was with somebody from up on Mueller Road, who's also very passionate about train passenger, bringing back train passenger service. And he was talking about how it would be really pretty simple to convert the, the tracks, you can, the tracks would be able to stay as is. And it would be a light trail service, a light rail service, rather, that would use the existing road level train station. So it wouldn't, there wouldn't be all that huge infrastructure of elevated platforms and such. So there's, there's a lot of talk about it. So thanks for bringing that to the, to our attention.
Well, the other, the other thing that came forward was that the Houstonic Rail Company is now asking the state of Connecticut to release some of their funds to repair the lines. But strictly for freight purposes, not for passenger. So I don't know how that's all going to tie in. They might decide that they want to use that line for, for freight instead of for passenger. We do, in the planning regulations, have a transportation overlay zone that we did put in in case we have to add a siding. And it would need to be elevated according to federal regulation. So I don't know. But anyway, it, it, just so that you guys know what's going on.
Yeah, interesting.
I'm keeping in line with it, so that's it.
Thanks. Town Meeting, so there've been a couple of executive orders that have come out on the emergency has been extended into May. But it, we're, we're looking at having, it looks like we're going to have to have either a completely Zoom meeting or an in-person meeting. And I don't know if the board is ready to, to make that decision tonight, but we need to have a special meeting soon to, so that we can start the planning process for this. There hasn't been as much guidance from the governor's office as we had hoped. But with the, with the latest executive orders, it looks like an in-person meeting is probably going to be the way that we need to go.
So when do we need to decide that? Because we're talking about May, what?
It is May, the hearing is set, is always May, the first Friday in May, which is May 7. So in the next week. Yeah, next week, we need to figure this out.
All right, so if we just talk about it now for a sec.
Sure.
What, what's, what's, what are the options for in-person?
In-person would be, we have it at the, in the meeting room downstairs. It would, we'd have to figure out the capacity based on the current executive orders and and then cleaning in accordance.
Is there a way we could maybe use the elementary school gym and spread it out even further?
I'd have.
Go in and, go in and out through one door, side door, and then have the whole thing locked down and cleaned down?
Yeah, I'd have to talk to, touch base with Michelle.
Yes, I think that would give us, that would certainly give us the ability to space chairs out. And, you know, you can't. And I think we need to anticipate for the public a large amount to be able to come and invite them to come. They may not, and it could be seven people sitting in a huge gym, but.
Yep.
So does that mean that you don't have to provide a Zoom link? You can't, you don't have to do a hybrid meeting? I thought you, if, I thought, the way I understood it was that if you were meeting in person, you still had to offer the ability to, for people to, to at least participate via Zoom in case they're not, still not comfortable coming out. Has that changed?
I'd have to look at the, the new executive order again. I, yeah, I'd, I'd have to look at it again, sorry.
So you, you would need to make sure that then.
Understanding.
That was, that has always been my impression.
That makes sense.
We have to make sure that the Kent Center School has the capability to be able to do that.
Well, wherever we do it, has to have the ability, right? But I think, so if we have to decide, I mean, I, I just hate having to do special meetings, special meetings, special meetings. So it would be good to know what the requirements are vis a vis the, you know, what we can and can't offer. Or we make the decision to just go fully Zoom. Which, I don't know how you run that kind of meeting, but.
Well, we, we did it last year.
Mm-hmm. What are your thoughts, Ed?
Well, the way they keep switching things every week, it's maybe we better off playing for Zoom. And if something changes last minute. But I think we should ask the school and find out ahead of time in case we want to switch it back. But the way things are going, you can't depend on having an in-person meeting at this point in time. And we're not very far from this meeting.
So why don't we just?
towns are all over the place. Some are having in-person, some are having Zoom. So there's not a.
Well, it sounds crazy if you, if you, if you have it in person and you have to provide Zoom or some sort of online meeting, then why would we go to the trouble of actually having it in person? What is, what's the benefit?
The public has been wanting to meet in person.
The benefit is that it's easier to talk.
That's true. There's.
Yeah, but not, it's not going to be, believe me, it's not going to be easier to talk if you have seven people in the gym and 700 people on Zoom.
Right.
It's actually going to be more, more cumbersome, I would think.
You just have to have rules. You have to have rules of how you're going to manage the meeting.
I'm not convinced, I'm not convinced that having people in person and having Zoom, having it bifurcated doesn't make sense to me. If indeed, that's, that's, that's the.
So let me.
I'm just, I'm just going off of what teachers have had the struggle of gearing up and spending a whole year figuring out how to teach kids online and in class. And it's been a challenge and.
Let me.
We have meetings at South Kent School, we have 30, 40 people on the meeting. And we do it every single week. So it can be done. And there's some people that are in person who do that.
Right, and it's.
I just don't see.
There's a lot of different ways that, that, that they're happening, for sure. So let me talk to Michelle. And we're, we're just going to have to have a special meeting so we can get this, all the details figured out. And that's the, that's.
Well, great, but I just, the, the, what I'd like to know is, what's the, the human cry to have it in person? One, two, what are the requirements? If indeed, we have to have, if we decide to do it in person, can, what's the flexibility or not with respect to having to provide, you know, some sort of online?
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Next is the hiring policy. So I spent a good portion of the last, I don't know, week looking over this hiring policy. And I, I'm really feeling like we, to a certain extent, well, I completely agree that we want to get some standardization and consistency put in place so that there's a fair process for candidates coming in. I feel like what we're setting up with, with a subcommittee for every single clerk and assistant who may work 10 hours a week is heavy-handed. And I think that it's hamstringing some of the sort of hamstringing the department heads. And, you know, we hire department heads because they are subject matter experts and they work with the folks in person regularly. But now we're sort of pulling that back. So I, I, I'd like to see, you know, I've been hearing a lot of comments coming through the hallways. And I think that there's a compromise that we can, we can make here to make it more productive for those non-department head, non-union employees who need to come through a, you know, a visible transparent process without hanging them up with a subcommittee. So I just wanted to sort of open that conversation, Ed and Chris. Before we get to open comments, I just want to have that round robin with you all initially.
So.
For thoughts.
Where, where, where did we leave it? We left it where we created subcommittees for hiring all these different assistants, correct?
Yep, any, any position.
So have we gotten those? So where are we with those?
Process ones. The ones that we made the decisions on, they've been posted and now we're in the two weeks waiting period.
Okay, and has, have the subcommittees been at least all convened? Or at least know that they're going to schedule meetings?
Yeah, I've had phone calls with most of them, some of them are in the building. But yeah, it's, it's in process, but that's not really, I'm really looking to talk about this process that we're pushing forward. And I, I feel like it's hamstringing the department heads for positions that are maybe 10 or 15 hours a week.
So I'm sorry, just to understand you talking about assistants?
An assistant or a clerk. So somewhat a staff member within a department, not a department head.
Okay, so let's take, for example, the, the latest process, which I believe was the tax collector wanting to hire a new assistant. Collector wanting, uh, to hire a new assistant because the old assistant is now our assessor.
Correct.
Uh, part of the challenge that I find there, if indeed you allow a head just to, are you, are you suggesting that the head just? Select us?
No, I'm, I'm suggesting a, sort of a middle-of-the-road. Um, compromise where we still, everybody still has the same process. But it doesn't involve creating a whole separate subcommittee, so the department head, um. Goes, walks through this process with the first selectman for these assistant level ten, fifteen-hour-a-week. Um, level positions. So the department head, just like it is in the policy now, the department head would notify the board. The board would say, yes, we're, we see there's a need to refill this based on the recommendation of the department head. Then the selectman's office, because we'll have the script all done, we'll do the posting. Then the department head and the first selectman will sit and come up with questions. However many questions appropriate for that position. Then the department head and the first selectman will, once that two weeks or ten days, whatever, waiting period is done and. All the applications come in, the department head and first selectman sit, go through the however many ten, let's say it's ten applications. Narrow it down to two to four, three to five, however many appropriate applicants to interview. First selectman and department head go directly to interview them. The department head then makes that, the, the final candidate is decided on based on those ranking questions, so you have that. Standard, consistent process, so everybody's asking a number of questions and. Both the department head and the first selectman, so that there's the, a balance of more than just one person. They ask the questions, we both rank the candidates. Based on the questions and based on the ranking, the, the best candidate is then recommended to the board of selectmen. So there's not this, because you could, we can run into a month, a, a situation where. We have a, we, there's a vacancy, then the board. Maybe for some reason doesn't, can't decide on who the subcommittee should be because of a third person that needs to be assigned, who's not at the meeting. So now it's another thirty days that it's protracted out. So instead, it's two people who are working in the building. In the day-to-day operations of the town government and it's happening, but in a, in a consistent. Standardized way, so it's, you're sort of ticking both boxes to have more involvement from the department head who we hire them because. They're the subject matter es- experts, they're the, you know, they're leading their department and running their department day-to-day. And there's a certain amount of trust that we have in those employees when we hire them as department heads that. They know what their needs are to run their department, um, better than any of us and. And so I think it's a, a reasonable compromise to get the ball moving down the, the field. A little more expediently, but not, you know, not rushing the process, still keeping a, a process in place. And that process would, would be inserted into the policy manual. Ed, thoughts?
Well, and what, what happens if the department head and the first selectman don't agree on the last person?
Then. I guess it would go to the board, I'm.
End up coming to the board anyway.
Right, but we're not, we're not protracting out the, the process.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with keeping the process simple. But I still think we're gonna end up with department heads and. Single departments. Maybe not being. Selecting. The person that might best, best represent the town. Since if, if they're gonna, if you and the, the first selectman and the department head is gonna go through all this work. Why are you even bother covering, coming to the other two selectmen, they vote on it then?
Because the board of selectmen is the higher authority in the statute.
Right, so that's why I still think, I know, I know how this is gonna be, this, this, and seems like it's a long process. Where it really isn't, shouldn't be a long process, but I am running into the park and rec being a long process because I can't get the. A meeting scheduled with the other two people to have a meeting, but we're working on it.
Which is another.
Trying for a week and a half now, and I don't think it has anything to do with. Um, not wanting to move the process along and not be, having people not being able to be available. I have a more of a feeling of the two people aren't sure what. The park and rec committee themselves want yet. And that's why I've asked for a park and rec committee meeting to go over, first of all, what. Direction they want the subcommittee to go into. And it's easier for, I think, for like. The tax collector, because there's one person in the office to work with the first selectman, for their assistant to go up with their guidelines. And I understand why it would streamline that process, but how do we come up with three sets of different rules for different? Groups.
Yeah, my thought is that it would, for anything that's. That's below a department head, so for assistants and clerks, I think those are the two, you know, broad titles that we have. Um, but for department heads, I think you do need involvement from the board of selectmen, because those are the people. Those are the managers, you know, the upper tier leadership management of the.
Well, I'm agreeing, but we're gonna end up with three or four different sets of roles, that's all. We're gonna have to consider that. For hiring policies. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it looks like we're gonna have two.
Right, okay.
I'm gonna throw a wrinkle in there. Here's the wrinkle. You have hired positions, you know, hired positions, and then you have. People who are voted in.
Elected, yep.
Thank you. So I'm gonna take again, uh, our most recent case, um, where it's a tax collector. If that department decides that they want to do, you know, choose the way they want to choose it. The trouble we could run into is that they select somebody and clear, it is clear to me that when somebody is, is hired in an elected position. Uh, as an assistant, is, there's a somewhat of a presumed. Um, transfer of, 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 of responsibilities when the other party moves out. So whomever Debbie would hire is being, we're spending a lot of money and time and energy, and they are too. To, to train. But then when it comes, if Debbie decides to, to not run again, they're the front-runner, and then it's really not a. It's not really a fair choice if you're gonna put another party, different party member up. So I just, I just.
Is not trained or certified, so it makes.
Right, so I, it, it, to me, there are so many little wrinkles in all of this. That while it may be cumbersome, I would hope we would all try to work with speed to take care of. Making sure the process went quickly and smoothly. Clearly, if you're hiring for a clerk. And it's just a clerk, say the board of finances clerk. That is not as, uh, say arduous, if you will, or maybe as time-consuming, uh, as, uh, as it is with. You know, another department. Um, I, I, I guess I don't see the sense of urgency, um. That would be satisfied by having two people decide versus three people. And if it's because it's a scheduling issue, to me that you, you don't join a committee. Unless you're prepared to move quickly and, and sit down quickly to make a decision.
I, I don't think that that's often a deciding factor for people when they, when they join committees. I.
Well, you bring up, you bring up a good point. I just, I, I, I'm, I'm. I'm sort of thinking like Ed, if we have to have three or four different policies for hiring, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
I, I don't know what the solution is for elected officials. It's in the statute that the town clerk. Appoints their own assistants, so there's, that's. That's it, that's statutory language, so there's no involvement with assistants in that office. Um, I just think that we're. You know, the department heads that are here every day and they're working with the people who they. Need to work with and need to be able to work with and trust and. You know. Have as their workforce every single day of the week, Monday through Friday. We're hamstringing them by, by pulling this out of. Out of their, so far out of their hands and. I, I think we're overthinking this. I think that with a process in place that. There's not gonna be three or four different processes and, and the, um. And if there are three or four different processes, we have, I don't know, forty-five page. Book of policies, um, then so be it. There, you know, policies that we should be following.
May I make a, a recommendation? Uh, so I hear what you're coming from, Gene, uh, and I, I understand the. Challenges it faces. Right now, we have how many people on the docket to be hired and how many subcommittees running that? Three?
Four.
Four.
Right, I think.
Can, can we all decide just to let these run and then get feedback as to how that process ran? That to me would be, make sense to see this run in operation. If it's problematic, let's deal with it. If it's not problematic and seems to go relatively smoothly. Let's revisit it then, but I think that to change something right now after we've already decided to do this. While I understand the genesis of it, sort of, the, the concern, let's see if it's an actual concern. And we have how many, four people to be hired within the next month?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's see how it goes. But, you know, if not, then what we have to do is figure out how to do it for each of the others. Then we have to make a motion, then we have to actually go and do it, it seems to me. Um, a little bit unnecessary at this point, until we know it's a problem. Right now, we're just assuming it might be a problem or. Might be hamstringing people, but, and if it does, let's hear about it. I, I'm totally open to trying to fix it.
Okay, so I was holding off sending this out to the employees because I wanted to have this conversation with. With the board, but I'll send out the way that it, we had, I had pitched it, um, at the meeting on the. When was that, the thirty-first?
It's more than pitching it, we, we, we made a motion.
Didn't. We did not make a motion, correct?
We made a motion to hire, to, uh, put together subcommittees, did we not?
Right.
Okay, that subcommittee we directed to make sure that they, they put together a list of questions, correct?
Yep.
At which point, first they were gonna post it on Indeed or wherever.
Yep.
And then we're gonna draft, the committee was gonna draft some questions, and they were gonna interview people, and then they were gonna bring it to us for a recommendation. Am I off?
Yep, no, that's.
Okay, so what's different than what we've stated? We just haven't codified it by writing it down and making it part of policy, correct?
Correct, correct.
Which I think is, which I think is prudent, because we may find that we didn't get it right, and if we find that we didn't get it right. Then we don't write the policy that way.
And, and can I, and I also like to say, I also kind, kind, find it kind of strange. We have an open position in the town of Kent right now. With no hurry to fill it. So. Yes, these hiring positions right now that are coming up, people are in a hurry to get them filled, but. We have an open highway position that no one's even discussed or even interested in filling, so not all these positions. All of a sudden come up and have to be filled within three weeks. So, yeah, we run into a situation where we all of a sudden have three positions that need to be filled. As quickly as possible to help these department heads out with their job, daily jobs, but then it doesn't always happen, so.
Well, I'd also like to reiterate that this is not different from what I, I remember happening with the last, the last selectman.
Right.
We, we did a hiring of a, of a, of an individual and we went to the, through the specific process. So. And as I mentioned before, I thought that was become, had become policy, but had not.
Alright, so we'll. Leave, we'll have it on the, um, agenda for next month and we can talk to each of the. The groups that come to make the recommendation and see how the process went.
And I, I might make, if indeed we find that there's a subcommittee that has a person that they are ready to hire, let's. Call us a special meeting and do it.
That's what I.
You know, I mean, we, we can act pretty quickly, so if they can act pretty quickly, let's get it done.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
Are we gonna be, are, are you gonna change the policy? Uh, um, that's what I'm still a little bit confused about, because. You didn't change the policy and procedure manual, so. You're kind of working outside the policy and procedure manual, so what does that say about the viability of the policy and procedure manual that's currently in place?
Chris, were you gonna say something?
I, there's. No, but I will, um, policy and procedure manual, uh, you know, we've been working in and out of that for a good long while on the boards. So, you know, no one's ever clearly said what policy is and how the policy is and where it goes. So, uh, in terms of hiring that I, I've seen, so, um, and I think this is something that we have to consider to make things. Um, to me, to bring them in, in, into some sort of consistent alignment.
Okay, so the policy and procedure manual is just basically, um, just a guide.
Go ahead, say whatever.
Well, you know, I always do, Chris, I mean. Something wrong with me if I didn't do that. So it's, it's just, you know, it's basically just a guide. I'm just, I'm trying to understand, I truly am. Um, because, you know, we were supposed to have a department head meeting, that was the last thing that we had said last month. To review the new policy that was gonna be put in the policy and procedure manual, and that didn't happen. So I'm just trying to understand. I, if you're not gonna follow the policy and procedure manual, then why do we have one? And. I, 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 I'm confused.
There's, there's so much work that needs to be done on the policy and procedure manual there, and you well know this, Donna, there's plenty of. There are plenty of policies in the policy and procedure manual.
Absolutely.
That are, have been shifted and bobbed over time and. You know, I'm. I'm, I made the, the argument today, you heard the argument that I made, that I think that it's. It's an overreach that there's a simpler way to do it. That said, there's, there's a lot in the policy procedure manual. That needs to be improved and better written and. I think it's a, you know, it's sort of collapsing the conversation to say that, so we're gonna move on to.
It just, I mean, if you're not gonna.
We're gonna move on, Donna. We need to move on.
That's fine, that's fine. I, I get it, I understand. Thank you so much for your time.
So just to finalize that, I would like to see, after we do this, uh, after we go through this process. To sit down, if we're gonna specifically go in the policy manual, to highlight the process that is presently in. The manual, and then juxtaposition to what we have thought about and the procedure we have gone through. At which point, then we can figure out whether there's a policy, significant policy change or a minor policy change.
Uh, proposed budget, so this was, if you go to number. It's the last page in the packet that Joyce sent out. I'm just gonna, um, ask Barbara if she can help chime in here. There was a discussion at the board of finance meeting. And I'll just read from their minutes. Mr. Epstein asked if the board is going to revisit the fire department and library's funding requests. Mr. Epstein made a motion to change the budget figures to the original request for the library and the fire department. Mrs. Herbst said the. Mrs. Herbst said the board should wait until the selectman meet to consider grant funding. That could fund these increases, Mr. Epstein said he doesn't want to leave anything to the Board of Selectmen. Ms. O'Dea Wirick said the board should give the selectman the opportunity to discuss this, Mr. Epstein withdrew his motion. So, as everybody probably well knows, there's. A large pot of money that's coming out from the federal government called the American Rescue Plan. That's going to. Directly siphon some money into. Into the town, so it's it it's a pass through, the state has no oversight over what they, what happens to the money before it comes to the town. So, and there's a bunch of, there's, you know, obviously deliverables, but there's also stipulations on. That grant funny, that funding that we're still waiting for the treasury to come out with. So Barbara, I'm gonna have you come on deck.
So we were given some guidelines by CCM. And as part of that guideline, one of the things that we can do with this money that we're getting, and maybe I'll back up a little bit and clarify. At this point, we've been told we're getting Kent is getting two hundred and seventy four thousand dollars. And and change over a two-year period, we're going to get half of it within sixty days and the other half a year from now. One of the things that we can do with this money is to. Assist. Nonprofits who have been impacted by COVID financially. And so what I would like to do is I would like to recommend. That you restore the appropriations to the fire department and the library to what they currently are. And then the increases that they've asked for, I would like to see them get those full increases as the Board of. Finance would like to see to come out of this grant funding. There is a caveat in the grant funding that we cannot use the grant funding to decrease our budget, so. The way that the library had come across already, they had asked for. An increase up to a hundred and twenty five, but they're currently at a hundred and ten. And the action that your board previously took was to reduce them down to a hundred thousand dollars. So they would need to be restored to a hundred and ten, and then the additional fifteen thousand can come out of this grant funding. For the fire department, they're currently at eighty six thousand five, they asked for a hundred and six thousand dollars. So, again, my recommendation is to return them back to eighty six five. And give them that difference of nineteen thousand five hundred out of the grant funding. I expect the first. Pile, first pot of money that's coming through from the grant funding to be a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars plus or minus. Take away the thirty four thousand five hundred that I'm proposing, go to the library and the fire department. That still leaves the town with a hundred and two thousand dollars to. Spend of this funding, and I believe Jean, did you say you had gotten additional requests from other?
Yeah, I've gotten a couple of requests.
I haven't seen those yet, so I don't know what those total, but. One of the other things that was a suggestion to be paid with this funding, and I believe we already took the appropriation out of the budget, maybe not. Was the upgraded phone system in the building.
That was removed, yeah.
And the.
Fiber is still in, so.
But that could be taken out.
Taking that out.
Be paid for with this funding.
Yeah, I'm not sure if. If the phone system would fit in any of the uses, acceptable use, those four. Acceptable use categories, again, we're supposed to be getting much more guidance from. Through CCM from the the federal government, and they keep telling us any day now, any day now. But I think just to address this. The specific item on the agenda for the fire department and library funding. We should consider taking Barbara's recommendation. So that we can get back to the Board of Finance.
Questions?
Go for it.
It still doesn't answer the question. How does the Board of Finance see our funding? For grants long term, Mr. Epstein can can decide to. Refund or, you know, create funding for them, and I'm curious as why. Two things, why he stopped there and two, if he's going to do that, why doesn't the Board of Finance raise salaries? Why doesn't the Board of Finance decide to do other funding? There's a fine line between what the Board of Finance does and what the Board of Selectmen do, the Board of Selectmen, it is our budget. The Board of Finance traditionally goes in and they say, okay, well, we feel that it's too much money being spent or. Not enough, and while they do have the right to go in line by line, traditionally, it's never really been done that way. It's been more of, no, we need you to cut by a certain amount. And I find it. A little bit frustrating to have the Board of Finance go in and cherry pick what they want to add to. Or and 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 I, and I appreciate the fact that the the board did not put that forward. But I want, I want to deal with the main issue, which is give, if the Board of Finance can give the Board of Selectmen direction. As to what they think is an appropriate funding level for our grants total. Because my concern is, we use this funding this year because it was COVID and there was, you know, some issue. So now we fund everybody to a certain level, and now that becomes a platform for next year. And then all of a sudden we go up again, which again, I'm not saying that these department, that these. Grant recipients don't. Don't deserve it, that's not the question on the table. The question is. Why, why should I continue personally to to support these different outside? You know, grant recipients, when I have internally people to think about who run all our departments, I mean, you know. Everybody knows I've been a hardliner when it comes to making sure we do things. In terms of cost of living. And trying to, trying to make sure that the salaries are in line, but but, you know, we've had a number of departments who have come with good rationale. That we've turned down, and now we're on the outside with all this, with 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 some fortunate money. There's no fortunate money to be able to give to one of our departments. Right? So I'm, I I know I'm all over the place, but my concerns are number one, are we creating a baseline for for these? These grant recipients to continue to go up just because we have some found money. And or how do we balance, I I want to know when we sit down here next year, or whoever sits down here next year. That they can fairly say, okay, we've given. The fire department and the library a lot more money, it's time to really look internally and see or make sure our departments and our salaries are balanced right. Or, and and I'm not saying they're not, but but to be able to honestly give that. Because I feel what happens is each year the Board of Finance, or at least recently, cherry picks. And yet I've never heard them say, gosh, you need to give. You know, the the highway department more money, or the town clerk more money, or the social services more money, I've never ever heard that. And to me, that's just not good budgeting.
So. I I can certainly ask those questions back to the Board of Finance, and, you know, maybe we should have a joint meeting. You know, I.
That's what I want.
Become the messenger and. You know, I'm carrying the message out to the Board of Finance, they discuss it, I carry the mess, their message back to us, we have come up with more questions. Maybe we just need to all sit down in a room and talk about this broad level. Fiscal sort of. Report card. Long term.
Okay, but to make it productive, we need to know all the levers, so as an example. We not only have this money that's coming in here, but we actually have revenues that have gone through the roof in in various departments. We internally, the town hall is not sharing in that revenue. We're not, we are, we are, we're doing other things with that money. But we're artificially keeping the mill rate low at the expense of many departments, and I don't mean that, I'm not trying to say that. That we don't get. You know, we don't, we don't get an equitable shake, I just think that there's no, there's no thought process as to how we're going to grow departments, how we're going to grow different groups. It's all, it seems to me that the Board of Finance needs to have some sort of. Guidance for us to be, us being the Board of Selectmen, to be able to to put the budget together. That's, that's how I would see it productive, not, I want this and I want that for a certain group.
And and in addition, that's beyond just keep the mill rate flat.
Yeah, because. We could keep the mill rate flat, we could, heck, we could, we could keep the mill rate flat, and with all the money we could came in, we could still pay people salary increases. And we could spend on a phone system, and we can spend on certain components that we are pulling back on. Or holding back on for the sake of. Flat mill rate?
Right.
Whatever, for for something I'm just not understanding.
Right. And it. The the philosophy of always keep the mill rate flat is. It gets to the point where, how many years can you do that before that hammer comes down? And then what happens when that hammer comes down, so you're not growing government and nobody wants to have their taxes increased. Absolutely, hundred percent. But.
Or what happens when you have something major project all of a sudden comes due, and now all of a sudden, people are going, well, what'd you do with all the money all these years?
Right.
And what happened when these grants dry up?
Well, it's just two year.
It's. Yeah, but you know what I mean, it just, yes, but you're talking about a lot of money in two years that isn't going to be here. And. You know, you can say the same thing with the, the Board of Finance could say the same thing with the parking wreck. How many people do you have that buy park passes, is this, is this a function, you know, how many people have library passes, you know, it just. It's the same thing every year and. That's why I said right in the very beginning, I'd like to have a joint meeting, I don't know if you remember it, when we had went through this, I wanted to have a meeting with the Board of Finance. And Chris and I sort of agreed, it's our budget, I with you also, Jean, that it is our budget, but. I wanted to know what their thoughts were, rather than have a meeting and say, well, the Board of Selectmen. We're going to tell the Board of Selectmen we want to fund, and like I said at that Board of Finance meeting, I said. We were doing what the Board of Finance asked us to do, was what was hold the mill rate flat. And now you're accusing us of not increasing to these two worthy departments that maybe deserved an increase all along. But we were doing what they wished, and they were kind of turning around and throwing a pie in my face, in my opinion. And don't say all of a sudden, oh, we're receiving all kinds of grants, because if we weren't receiving all kinds of grants this year. Then what would they say? Well, we have to fund these two groups, but now we, now it's okay to raise the mill rate. And would that have happened? So, that's, that's all I want to say, and I've said it before, and that's my thought about it, so.
Chris, were you, you were going to say something?
No, I agree with that, I think if we can set something up, let's get it done, but I just don't, I don't want it to be a shouting fest, I want it to be instructive and constructive. To make sure that we know not what's, not only for this year, which of course we have money and funds, and that's great, and we're all lucky. But I don't want to, I just don't want. Year in and year out, I've seen it, our, the the rest of our budget aside from grants and other sort of. Have been sort of been kicked, kicked down. Down the road, and I don't know why, if they trust us with all of the components of the. Of the budget, why, why are we getting second guessed? When, as Ed said, we've, we've achieved the goal that they've wanted to at the sacrifice, in my opinion, of of many. Which honestly was the only reason that I made this suggestion, I want to have this conversation, and it's a hard one to do, but let's do it.
Okay.
Great.
I'll send something to Nancy Wirick. Um, Streetscape Building Committee.
Have you heard something from Gina yet at all?
No. What? I wasn't expecting that I would hear something necessarily.
Do we need to send, the Board of Selectmen need to send her boss a letter saying that someone's dragging their feet? To get this process going?
I don't know if that's sort of a.
Oh, I think we should definitely.
Claim to me.
As they've been putting up, that department has been dragging their feet, they're changing things, now they want snowshells involved. Snowshells involved in different areas of the streetscape which weren't added, which weren't in the beginning of it. And if they're going to keep dragging their feet, maybe it's time we went over their heads and said, why, what's this process problem? And I know there's one Eastman, I don't know if that one Eastman has been signed and sent back or not.
So there, I can answer that, there are two Eastmans that are still outstanding. One is the Kent Barnes, and I spoke to the representative today who was seeking something. To help explain to the, to the, you know, people she reports to. I've endeavored to get that and hopefully send that off to them, but as I explained to them. It doesn't matter what, whether we're going to paint this in 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 blue and pink, it's just we need to have that access from the right of way. The other is Webster Bank, I have talked to their regional person, I've left three or four messages recently. To no avail, but I will continue to chase them. You know, pleading for them to sign this, so it is my understanding, because those two right of ways are not in, according at least to what Mike told me. DOT won't even look at us yet, but I don't know if that's accurate.
Okay.
But it's frustrating not having.
Because it's holding the whole bidding process up now, and now we're into, gonna be.
Right.
So I guess the question, Jean, is, you know, I I anticipated at least getting the one from the Kent Barnes, I had a.
Oh, good, okay.
Pretty, pretty, pretty good conversation with them, I've just not had contact with Webster. Is, can you, can, maybe you find out from council what happens if we don't get something back from somebody? And then help the Streetscape Committee or DOT figure out that. Again, I hope to be able to to be successful in getting these final two, but. You know, we face the problem is, if we don't get them, what happens?
Okay.
Well, the only thing that I mentioned it, they kind of laughed at me, but that's, I'm used to that, at the last committee meeting, I mentioned that. Maybe if we don't get them back, we leave that phase out. And do it. In the next phase somehow, you know, if that little short span and we don't get the Eastman is holding the whole bid process up. So maybe it's something we think about at some point, just to let you know.
I don't, I don't think it's, it's, there's no malicious intent here.
No, 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 not at all.
It's a, it's a bureaucratic process that I think unfortunately we're dealing with, not only on the DOT side, but just getting securing these. And I hope to get them, hopefully I'll be, spoke to him today, so hopefully I'll get them.
And the committee appreciates your help on this, Chris, you've been very instrumental on getting these done, so.
Ed, have you had any success getting a hold of Gina?
No, they don't call, they don't have not returned my calls or Ron Ferris once yet, or emails.
Okay, can you forward the emails? To them, that would be.
If I save them, sure. But I, you know, like Mike Doherty mentioned at the last meeting, they, they're adding snowshells into this hole. Thing now, all of a sudden. And some of the members asked at the meeting, where did they, where do they want the snowshells, and it sounded like originally it was only from the railroad tracks north. And then he wasn't too sure about the rest of it, so. Which was a grassy area, putting a grassy area back in between the the road and the sidewalk.
Right. Is there anything else for a report from Streetscape, do you know when the, do they have a next meeting on the books?
Yeah, I didn't see one.
Okay. Next is Swift House Roof Replacement Subcommittee. I had a, an email from Zan and a conversation with her today on the phone. Oh, and she's on the call. Hi, Zan, thanks for coming on. And I, I'd like to move this to a special meeting where we can focus on the recommendations that the task force put together because we never really addressed that. We accepted their report and kind of moved swiftly on. And there's a, you know, there's a bigger picture here. So I'd like to move this on to a, a special meeting in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, um, so we have the funds to do the roof, correct?
Yes.
So what is the holdup for deciding just to do the roof? Get it done?
There is no holdup.
So, so
Zan, can you come off? Um, oh, Joyce Kit just came off of mute.
A holdup is you were going to create a subcommittee to oversee the roof project and that hasn't happened yet.
I thought we did. I thought I was on.
You volunteered at that meeting, Ed, and then you asked for, um, members of the committee, uh, the, um, community be, uh, put in the newsletter.
Oh, okay. No one responded.
I thought we had assigned this committee. Sorry.
I, I, I recall it like Joyce said, we had Ed and then you were going to ask, but, but you were also going to ask the, uh, two other members of the, what was the, uh, you know, the other subcommittee? Um, but if you have a group, let's get it, let's get it together. And, uh, did you get any?
Nothing from the public.
So, but did you, you turned to, you asked Zan and you asked?
Marge.
Marge and they, I believe Zan is, is Marge willing?
Yeah, both, both of us agreed.
Yeah, I, I thought this was a, I thought this was a, sorry, I'll make a motion to, so that we can make forward motion on the roof.
Yep.
Well, I, I have a question, if I may. If this is labeled a roof committee, then I'm concerned, as I said in my email to the selectmen, that we won't have the authority to make any progress on anything other than the roof. And by the way, there's also a chimney and crown molding and some other things that are associated with the roof work, not just the roof. Um, that require perhaps different contractors. Well, especially a mason as well as a roofing person. They have to be done in tandem. So it has to at the very least include that scope of work. But in addition to that, there were recommendations that were made. And both Marge Smith and I are very concerned that those recommendations are just in abeyance without being addressed. And that we won't have any authority or charge to make any progress on moving forward with anything else that the committee, the prior task force recommended for the selectmen. So I wrote that in an email to all of the selectmen. And, uh, that's when Gina and I talked briefly and she suggested that we postpone the scope of work for this committee until another meeting.
So my question is, don't we have, we have money budgeted for next year's cycle, correct?
Yes, and we have work that was not completed last year because we didn't have adequate funds to do all of it at once.
Right, but I believe the funds that were allocated for next year's budget had specific tags to it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, so my, my question is, and is, um, would it be appropriate to hold off on the roof and have that expenditure?
No, there's no reason to hold off on the roof.
Then let's get it done.
Well, I know, but what happens to everything else? When do we talk about that? When?
We, we talk about it in next year's budget after, because that's when it's slated for.
No, we need to talk about what the scope of work is for this committee if Marge and I are to do what we feel is important and necessary to continue with the recommendations that were made to the selectmen.
Um, okay, let me, let, it could be very simple. The three of us here, the Board of Selectmen could right now make a motion to put a roof on that building. It is under our purview to do so.
Okay, and a chimney and
No.
You have to do the chimney with a roof. You cannot
Well, it did, the, the, the roof is what was put forward, right? And the chimney was coming when?
No, the chimney is a part of the proposal and the budget that we put forth to the selectmen.
Of the thirty-five thousand.
Of the thirty-five thousand.
Fine, then let's put it on. That's, that's what we have the money for.
Right, the chimney needs to go on and be flashed before the roof goes over it.
Okay, okay. Maybe I misunderstood, sorry.
Right.
The chimney goes up and a roof goes on, but we have the money to do that in the, uh, in the fund. So what, what we're saying is that we don't need to do much more than to do that, put that on.
No, but will, will the scope of work for this committee be enlarged to address the other issues that were proposed?
For next year?
Or, well, you know, to start work whenever we have the time and the availability to, to start planning. I mean, we're not going to spend any more money. We're, I'm not asking that you address funding. I'm just saying there's work that needs to be done to plan um, to get budget figures, to get visual material so that the list of improvements that we recommended that you were a part of, Chris, the, the list of improvements, um, can move forward at the appropriate time that the selectmen decide that they will address it with the town.
So if you're asking, are we forming a building committee to go forward from now to whatever?
Is it a building committee or is it a roof committee with an additional, you know, chimney and
I don't really care. I just, I don't really care. I think that what's appropriate is to get the thing going.
Yeah.
And so if you're worried about semantics of whether you're going to be on a committee next time to talk about putting more flashing in or putting something in or then, then I, 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 I wouldn't be concerned with that. I think what our concern is, is to get a roof on. We have the money, we have the estimates, correct? We, I saw them.
Right, but we're going to have to get three estimates because I think that's required for anything over five thousand dollars. We know what we can do it for.
Well, I think you're going to have to put it out to bid, not just get three.
Yeah, I mean, okay, put it out to bid, but, well, yeah, but we need to put it out to bid to credible, you know, contractors.
Correct, right. That's why I say we keep this committee here now. We get the roof, the chimney done, if we can do it, if the bids come in favorably. And if we want to continue on with the committee after this, I don't see why anyone would complain about
Okay, I'm speaking for Marge Smith and myself. We feel that there's unfinished work that wasn't funded last year that needs to be addressed. We also feel that we made a recommendation to the selectmen that wasn't really addressed with regard to proposed improvements that would need to go through a town funding process. We can't propose anything in a town funding process unless we do the groundwork for that. And we would like to be involved with that and have approval from the Board of Selectmen to include that in the scope of work of this committee.
I don't think, there, there are a few things. One, we need to get a roof and chimney on, right?
Right.
Two, we've budgeted money for next year for improvements as outlined by the subcommittee.
Right.
Three, the selectmen agreed at some point to bring the balance of what we may need to do to this building to the town. That's not on the agenda yet and it won't be done by this year.
Right, I, I don't expect it to be done by this year, but
So why, so why do we need a recommendation? Why do we need a recommendation? Uh, or, or, or acceptance of that right now?
Well, we're just afraid it won't happen.
Well, I get it.
On the right side.
Well, we'll, we'll keep it on the agenda.
And if, well, I mean, you know, it's, the building is an asset for the town. If it's to be useful, it requires improvement.
I think, I, I think
That's not going to happen unless there's some authorization to plan for it. Not to do it, not to have funding for it, but to make, to come back to the Board of Selectmen with recommendations that have real figures and, you know, a floor plan and renderings.
I think you're getting way ahead of yourself. I think that we, we, we agreed, I believe, on our subcommittee, and I think we recommended to the selectmen, uh, that there were some immediate things that needed to be done and they were funded and taken care of. There were some secondary things that needed to be done. They were funded, uh, and, and taken care of. There are some tertiary ones, specifically the roof. And they are being addressed. Unfortunately, we were able to find, uh, some Emily Hobson money and I think that's great for the town. The next step is to go into and dig a little deeper with what we spent, what we have budgeted for money next year. But I think what, what the philosophy was, and correct me if I'm wrong, was to make the building, uh, clean it up, tighten it up, make it nice because it is a town building, and then bring it in fairness to the town. At some point to decide what and how we're going to deal with it beyond that.
Okay, one of the things, for example, is that we are required to have an ADA compliant entrance and ba- and bathroom. I have talked to Mike Gavel about the sidewalk planning and and addressed specifically while the sidewalks are going in, that we need to be able to coordinate that with an ADA entrance. I'd like to be able to do that so that we don't have to start dismantling curbing and putting in another entrance at a later date. Could that be added? Just so it's in the planning stage?
Uh, I'm not, are you saying that where does the ADA have to come in? The side or, or the front?
Um, well, there has to be a curb cut at some point for one parking place for, um, a, a handicap vehicle, which would require a curb cut. And then I have in mind, but I haven't drawn it up yet, and I'd like to be able to present it to you. Um, how we could make the front entrance ADA compliant. There was an original plan that Wes Wirick's office put together that seemed like it might solve that problem.
Well, again, um, I, I think you need to check with, um, specifically Joe Manley, because you can get, it depends on where your front entrance is.
Uh huh.
And that, so if your front entrance happens to be that side built, uh, side door, then that has to be ADA compliance. If it's a front door, then that has to be ADA compliant. Um, so I, again, I think we're getting well beyond what we need to do here. And I understand that there are things that you need and want. I get it.
But I don't want with regard to the sidewalk project, I don't want new sidewalks to go in and then have to undo them and
You're not going to do a curb cut there. You're not going to, you're not going to put on that sidewalk in the front a, a low curb cut, because if you do, you'll have to put a crosswalk there.
No, that's
It's also illegal to back out on Route seven. You cannot back out on the highway.
To three forty-one.
That's correct. It's illegal in the state of Connecticut to back out on the highway.
Okay.
So can we just, before we get, I feel like we're getting way down the, the pike here. Can we go back to just getting a roof and a chimney onto this building?
A chimney and the crown molding underneath has to be done.
Whatever the thirty-five thousand dollars was that you, you, you got together, if we could bid that out, that would be great.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I'm happy to bid that out, but I'm not going to give up trying to plan ahead.
Well, I know that's in and I appreciate it and so did the other two selectmen, I'm sure.
Yeah, because otherwise all the work that we did over the course of a year is just sitting in the dust and a
Well, I would, I would, I would take a different position on that because I think that uh, there's more credit to yourself and to Marge, myself, and also the three selectmen and having crit approve it and other things that we're making to, to bring this building back to life. And I can only implore your patience so that we get this thing and get it done right.
Okay, can I have some assurance that it will be addressed on, without going into mothballs at some?
We'll keep it on the agenda. How about that?
It'll stay on the agenda. So in making this motion for subcommittee, I'm trying to come up with a little bit of wording so that we're covering what we need to cover and not getting too bogged down.
I think the subcommittee just needs to be the three people that to work on putting the roof and the chimney out to bid to present to the town.
Okay, when the new budget is in place?
There has nothing to do with the new budget. This has to do with what are, we agreed to spend the thirty-five thousand dollars for.
Okay. And so Ed, you're saying to put it out to bid and then present it to the town, but are you, aren't we looking to get the project to put it out to bid? To have the subcommittee put it out to bid, come back?
Present it to the slot, and however, whatever channels the town needs to, but we already have the money. So I don't know if the town has to prove to spend money that's in a private.
I, I think my understanding was that this fund would have the, you know, Emily Hobson fund would cover it and that it doesn't require approval by the town, other than the selectmen.
Right, and Barbara was just in my office and she said, yes.
Good, and we're all set. And I think this, uh, I think the original committee of me and the other two people on this committee can work with you or Gene to put it out to bid, this process out to bid, select the the best bidder for the project, not recommend possibly maybe the lowest, but the best that's, we're going to have to work on a scope, figure out what kind of roof we want, what kind of shingles we want, kind of flash we want.
I'm looking for a motion to create this subcommittee.
I'm making a motion that we create a subcommittee.
It's a charge.
I make a motion that we create a subcommittee to, uh, get bids and to recommend to the Board of Selectmen the replacement of the roof chimney and anything else uh, as recommended by the Swift House Subcommittee on the repair of the roof. And that committee will be comprised of three members, Ed Mattson as a, uh, member of the Board of Selectmen, Zan Charity, and Marge Smith as as, uh, the three members.
I'll second that.
Did you get all that, Joyce? Give you a minute to
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. Can you read it back?
No. I was going to rely on the tape, sorry. Basically, the motion, Chris's motion is to create a subcommittee to put out a bid and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for the replacement of the roof, including the chimney and any other related charges. And the subcommittee is comprised of Ed, Zan, and Marge. There's probably a few other words in there that I'll get.
Yes, you will.
Okay. Okay. We'll make sure that we all know what we're voting on. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, Zan.
Okay.
And for persevering on behalf of the Swift House and Emily, it's Emily. I, I have nothing on the social media policy. Chris, anything on Main Street noise and traffic? We have two new signs where, um, Rick, Andrew and I are looking to move the current signs. There's three signs out right now. We're going to move them to other locations likely, um, Kinnick Road for a month. We've had a couple of, um, concerns from residents of the speed at which people are coming back down Kinnick. So we want to put that in place to get some data and, and have that be a deterrent. South in the area of the Kent Land Trust facility, um, there's been a number of crashes over the years. We had a, the um, Connecticut Crash Repository run some data for us. It's nothing that, that they saw as, um, needing attention, but Connie Manus reached out to me. So we're going to gather some data there and there's possibility of having, um, and Condot come, um, and do an assessment on that stretch of road. So that'll be two signs. Um, two signs are going to go on Elizabeth Street, um, either way to collect some data and provide a deterrent over there. And then we still have a couple of other locations. We may put one down on We may put one down on Kent Hollow and skip up on Skiff Mountain.
Can I make a recommendation someday, uh, whenever, just, uh, three forty-one in Cobble Road, maybe? For a little while?
Yep.
Cause there's a lot of traffic, people pulling in and out of there for walking and stuff.
Both directions.
Down off the mountain pretty quick. And just not saying has to be done soon, but it, just put it on a location and might.
Yeah, we can add it.
Someday.
Yeah, we're trying to build a schedule for a year so that we can.
We get Emory Park, if we get Emory Park people coming back, it might be a good sign just to have somewhere on that stretch.
Yep. Both directions or just the coming in?
I think coming down the hill is more of an issue than going up.
Yeah.
Out of town.
You have that big, the mountain you're coming down off of.
I just wanna add, uh.
Sorry.
That's all right. Where I, as I mentioned back in the January. Uh, that Andrew and I met and we talked about some ideas, but of course didn't formulate anything to. Bring forward, especially for budgeting, a couple of things. One. Uh, where it seemed to be coming out of the pandemic and, uh. It just seems, and I'm getting this anecdotally from other towns. But it seems like people are really coming out during the nice, good weather. And really going to be walking up and down streets and, and I, I. I'm assuming Kent's really gonna, we're gonna get hit with that. Two, we have the sidewalk, the contemplative, uh, change in the sidewalk that's going to be disruptive. And it's going to cause people moving around in manners of which. Are going to probably put us into some tough, uh, traffic situations. Uh, three, in light of the discussion, and I, I throw this out to, uh. Specifically to Barbara, uh, wondering if indeed we might be able to tap into some of the funding. Uh, for that, that they're anticipating for the grant increase. For, uh, maybe some additional police patrolling, uh, downtown during the warmer weathers, specifically weekends. And that was sort of the line that, that Andrew and I were talking about is having some sort of a potentially retired. Uh, a police officer who could pick up extra time during the high traffic time. Um, and I'm wondering if we can't tap into that because. It seems to me there's a confluence of situations, uh, that, that's going to produce quite a bit of a mess downtown potentially. Um, as it just mentioned, and I think it is, it behooves us to anticipate that and see if we can't. Within, hopefully, some money be able to, 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 uh, get a jump on that. Uh, I would, I would hate like heck to just see this summer. Come and go and find that we've had, uh, you know, considerable, considerable problems that we just weren't able to address. You know, primarily because of, um. You know, me in particular, uh, not being able to get something in a budget or something to sort of think about beforehand. So I don't know if that's possible, but, uh, that's, that's my concern there.
Um, yeah, we can, the way that I'm looking at the language right now, I'm not sure if we can find a fit there. Um, but again, there's more coming out, so I'll add it to the, the list. Um, we also have a meeting coming up with HVA and a bunch of, and all the other towns up and down the river. To talk about, um, sort of next steps for HVACs. Trying to help us all find solutions to, to this, what is gonna come down the pipe pretty quickly. Um, I can't remember the date of that, but. Uh, might be the twenty-first of April. So HVAC is, has been very engaged with all the towns over the winter, um, on this.
So you, you talked specifically about our North Kent Road issue?
No, both North Kent and Bulls Bridge, they've included in the conversation.
So, um. The, the State Park, Kent Falls seems to take care itself. The state will have that open, seems. Uh, are we still going, oh, do we anticipate a problem at North Kent Road?
I would assume that we should.
Okay, is there, uh, I know that we have cones and tape. Uh, do we need to take any other action there? Do we need to put up a gate?
We voted last year to put up gates there, but. There are issues with the Kentland Trust being able to have access to their, um, their property.
So the Kentland Trust does have access to their property. They own the property right up to Route seven, and they can walk straight down to the woods. Right down to the tracks, right to across the tracks to the river.
There's, yes, there's no parking, there's no, you know.
It's not, it's not a preserve, is it? I mean, what, I mean.
Melissa, I see you on the call.
So why, why, I mean, they, there's a, there's a. Is actually a spot.
It is a preserve and it is used.
Well, I know it's a preserved and I know it is used. Uh, I know the Stanley Tool Company owned it before that, and I know Bob Avian owned it before that. What I'm saying is I know the land intimately. You can pull off Route seven. There's actually a parking spot right before one of the houses. Um, and, uh, you, one can get down there. The, the, the challenge that we have, Melissa. Is that we have people going down there that are not supposed to be down there.
I'm fully aware.
I totally, while I totally understand, uh, the situation, I would hope that the land trust would understand, uh, that there's a greater, greater need here. Um, because we can't keep patrolling that, at least in my discussions with Andrew. It's a, it's a challenge for him to go there. And then all the way down to Bulls Bridge.
It's not, it's not a well-used time for him.
And we totally understand that. We, we wanna open up a conversation that, that. Is part of the solution. We wanna be a partner in the solution.
And so do you know, do you have any ideas as to what the land trust's solutions might be?
That's not for me to say in this meeting right now, and, and that would be a board discussion and a further discussion.
Okay, but, uh, okay, so is there any way we can move that along and discussion happen? Because the summer months are coming fast.
We would love to open a discussion up with that. For sure.
So Jean, can you go back to the land trust and ask them for some perspective as to how they want to handle this? Because our, it, it would be my sense, at least in this time when we have, um. You know, when we have still dealing with the pandemic and still dealing with a, a, a police enforcement that we figure out a, a, a right way to deal with this. Because it's just a, it's just, it's, it's sucking up time from Andrew, which seems to me. It's an, it's an unfortunate, uh. You know, time commitment for him when, when there's so much more to, to, you know, to deal with. And maybe even the HVA as to what their solutions are, and maybe it's all dovetailed together.
Yeah, Melissa, uh, do you, have you guys been, um, on those, in those conversations?
I'm not, I'm not familiar with what Connie has done with that.
Okay. I'm, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'm sorry that it's.
Little out of my purview as direct program manager.
Sure, sure, and I apologize. Um, I'll follow up with Connie. Um, I know that HVA is looking to add at least one more, one more Rio team. To the mix, um, that would focus on this southern piece of it, of the, you know, the whole swath. Going all the way from Mass down. Then that meeting is on the twenty-ninth of April. So I'll get in touch with Connie.
Thanks.
And thanks, Melissa, for.
Thanks, Melissa.
For flexing here. Um, report of the selectmen, I'll just fill in some of the.
John Grant has his hand up.
Oh, I apologize. Hi, John.
Hey, how are you? I've had my hand up since new business. Anyway, I just wanna clarify, that's no problem. I thought that was a procedure. Uh, I just wanna clarify something that Ed said concerning Park and Rec Committee Subcommittee. We, I've been working with CPRA, CPRA, and they sent me a template and I customized it for us in our town. I sent out a copy of, uh, what we would like to have, uh, to the other two subcommittee members. I just, and I told them we would discuss it with them in a, a meeting on Thursday.
Right.
Uh, at eleven o'clock, right, Ed?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so, yeah, so what you said before was improperly correct. We are moving forward. This is a time-sensitive issue. We have to get this done as quickly as possible. And I'm just waiting for Joyce to give me a Zoom meeting, a number and everything, and we can go ahead.
Well, the only issue with it, John, is we kinda need approval from. The Park and Rec Committee itself before we recommend a.
No, we were tasked just as a subcommittee to just do the, uh, temporary hiring.
As long as there aren't any other committee members that are gonna have a problem.
No, which is, we were tasked, the three of us.
Okay.
So we're moving forward and it's a great resource, the CPRA, and they've helped me out a lot, and they're willing to help me to go through to. The final hiring process as well, which is great.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Hopefully we can get this meeting together. I mean, we're all three of us are available at eleven o'clock Thursday. So Joyce, that's the only time we can meet together this week. We wanna get it done as soon as possible and send it back to the, uh, select.
And I was unaware of that. I will handle that tomorrow.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So moving on to report of selectmen, um, we covered a lot, so I'm not gonna rehash any of that. Um, pistol permit interviews have fallen right off. I had one last month, um, and it was sustained at, you know, five to ten every month for almost a year before then. Um, as far as the pandemic, we're. Number, I think we're ranked fifth in the state for the number of people overall who have been vaccinated in our town. We have been able to secure, um, a resource to get homebound. Uh, residents vaccinated. The J and J pause has really caused a hiccup. Um, on a number of different fronts, and that's definitely gonna be on the home bounds front. But the RVNA, which is the, um, Ridgefield VNA, Bethel VNA, and New Milford VNA all. Um, merged and they're now called RVNA. So they're gonna be handling those homebound vaccines for us that we get on a weekly basis. We get a list from the, um, Torontiary Health Department, so. That's sort of a relief to, to find that resource, because it didn't exist. The state stood up a form. Without any other content, and, um, so it was a little frustrating. The case rate remains in the thirties. I think last week is thirty point eight. Um, around us, the case rates are skyrocketing. New Milford, Brookfield, um, Newtown are all in the sixties. So there are spikes happening all over. We have to continue been doing what we've been doing for the last fifteen-ish months. Um, testing is gonna be open through the end of April. They usually, um, contact me. Around now to get the next month. I haven't heard back from them. So my, and my thought is that they're gonna either discontinue or they may go to once every other week. As they're, we're moving through, um, getting people vaccinated. We continue to meet with the schools, the three private schools every other week, because they're, you know, leading up to graduation. They just recently allowed, um, the seniors to come into town, as you probably have seen, Monday through Fridays only for a very specific. Time. They all felt that that was an important thing, you know, in the process of being a senior at these schools. Having a little bit of liberty, um, is sort of an important piece of their experience. So they're doing that on a very limited basis. All have reported that it's going very well. They haven't had any complaints. I haven't had any complaints. We're also, we've also, um, Eric and David have reached out. Eric's had an ongoing relationship with the folks over at Kenmont. Kenwood for pretty much the entire year, um, just to make sure that, you know. For their closure last year, and then just to see where they stood as far as this year. They are gonna be opening. There's finally some guidance from the state as far as camps, so we've been meeting with them every other week. Um, with emergency management to help them walk through what they need, because they had. You know, it's strange. We've all been living this for, you know, fifteen months and going through the daily. You know, hiccups and, and things switching, but that Kenmont has been closed, so they, this is. They're, they're doing this for the first time in then over the next month. So Eric and David are, are working with them. Just to provide some support. That's pretty much it as far as COVID. Um, the COG, we met last Thursday. They endorsed the Bulls Bridge Rural Collector Project, which is, um, I don't know if Rick is, yes, he's still on if he wants to. Um, chime in on that. It's a, um, it has to get approved by the COG in order for the, the funding to come in. Um, there's a number of bills that the COG is tracking. Most of them were in my last newsletter. There's a, um, a bill that could affect zoning that Dino Donna has been following very closely. There's, um, a bill about, um, absentee ballots that Darlene has been following very closely. So there's, I think somebody said the other day on a call, there's like sixteen hundred bills. Um, so for a legislature that's not even meeting in person and was. Sort of saying out in the spheres that, oh, it's gonna be a quiet year from the legislature standpoint, because we're not meeting in person. That's not the case at all. Um, we covered pedestrian safety. Sustainable CT, we're looking to schedule a meeting for Earth Day, the first meeting. I have a couple other calls to make. And, um, really, the, the most sort of the big, big conversation is the Memorial Day Parade. The, um, the Legion is going forward with their arrangements. They've. Submitted their permit for the flyover. Um, I know Andy Osef has been working in the background. There's a couple other folks in Legion working in the background. There, um, the plan is to go ahead with the Memorial Day Parade. The, um, state guidance has not been very helpful. Um, there are a number of towns around the state that are going forward with the Memorial Day Parade, but. There are also some that aren't. So that's, um. Sort of a question that I have for, for the two of you. Any thoughts?
I'd say we have. That's my thought.
Uh, when, when do they have to decide by? And, and isn't it, uh? The Legion puts it on, correct?
The Legion puts it on, so I'm, we're not looking to make a motion or anything. I'm sort of looking to have a conversation and that, just consensus.
If they're gonna do the parade, if they're doing the parade, that's fine. I think the fire department has to decide if they're gonna be participants, and so do every other. Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts and, um, and, and the, in the group, and I would just recommend that. Uh, you know, people are gonna be on the street that they, you know, maybe they clump together in groups that they know are their bubbles and. Um, but yeah, I think people are gonna probably, like anything, they're gonna just make their own choices to whether they're going to. Participate or not, or how they're gonna participate.
Is it gonna be the normal time, Jean?
I have no idea. Don't have any of those details yet.
Cause we booked the Joint Chiefs, the Kentland Trust has already booked the Joint Chiefs to do some kind of concert, whether it be. It's probably not gonna be ti- typical Memorial Day picnic like we normally host for the whole town, but, um. Maybe more like the concerts we did last fall.
Okay.
So as soon as we know what time the parade will coordinate so that it. Feels cohesive.
Okay. I'll follow up with Andy and Brent on the, more of the details, because they're gonna. We're probably gonna have to put CERT into play to help with, um, just the management, because the Legion, you know. It, it manages itself, you know, the, the public piece of it. So I will follow up with Andy.
Yeah, our thing would be similar to the, the fall, so we wouldn't need CERT's help. We're, I think we have a good formula for that.
Okay. Terrific. Yeah, I was more talking about the parade with the social distancing, unless something, um, you know, changes between now and then. Okay.
The day at Costco's.
Say that again?
Just make believe it's a day at Costco's and. You have ever been to Costco's, I go every month, and you have five hundred people in the building, no temperature being taken as you go in the door. Which is pretty amazing, so, uh, I guess there's a lot of people down Danbury that don't care one way or the other about this whole thing, so. We're all outside. I think we've heard enough about social distancing and I think people can handle it if we have a parade.
Yeah, I just don't want to have what's happening in Brookfield and New Milford.
Well, you don't hear people going in the hospital. You know, it's, if you, you should go to Costco's if you want to see the parking lot on a Friday and Saturday. It's all the way out to the end of the road every day.
Sure.
So, and then the official report just came out, more people died of cancer last year than COVID.
Okay, so it is eight twenty-one. Joyce, you got that? There you go. There you are.
Yep.
We will adjourn. Thanks, everybody for persevering. Enjoy the weather.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.
Bye.
Thanks.